Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Vrehalen is excused. Alderman Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Gutzakowski.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you all for joining us. We are here for a special council meeting to[20.32][20.32]interview candidates for the position of second district alderman. We're going to begin the session by reading the ground rules for tonight's interviews. Oh, I'm sorry. I went right by it. Can we please stand for the pledge? Is there a veteran in the room? Would you please lead us in the pledge, sir?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. To lay the ground rules, I will read out the ground rules to what's going to govern tonight's meeting and interviews. The rules will be the same for all candidates, so please pay attention. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement for a maximum of three minutes. It is not necessary for each candidate to use three minutes if they do not choose. The candidates will be interviewed in the order their name appears on the agendas. The city administrator will facilitate questions and answer segments in a traditional job interview format. He will work off a list of questions previously prepared by the city. These questions were not given to any candidate in advance of the interviews. These questions and answer segments will take approximately 10 minutes, which timeline will be strictly adhered to in fairness of all candidates. Candidates may make closing remarks if he or she wishes to do so, limited to no more than two minutes. Candidates are reminded that under Wisconsin Open Meetings law, they may choose to remain present in the chambers at all times, but we are asking as a courtesy to all the candidates to voluntarily remain outside the room except during their own interviews. Remaining in the chambers will not have an effect on the council's decision one way or the other. There will be no audience demonstrations permitted, clapping, booing, cheering, etc. There will be no handing out of documents or literature. Since the appointment is a common council responsibility, there will be no audience participations, questions, or speaking in support or opposition of any candidate. At the conclusion of the interviews, the council will take a brief recess to allow all candidates and other interested parties to return to the room for the council's decision and vote. The vote may not be taken by secret ballot. Paper ballots are being used for convenience, but the individual votes by the council members are easily identifiable. The majority vote method will be used in filling the vacancy. If three members vote for one individual, one member votes for another, and another member votes for another third candidate, the person receiving the three votes would be the individual appointed to the office. Are there any questions from a candidate? Okay. So, we will begin the process. I do want to read into the record, I believe it was our first candidate, Ms. Tracy Gutske of 830 West Creek Way Court. She has sent us an email that I have here, and she says she has decided she will not be pursuing the position of alderman. Tracy had, I'm sorry, yes, Tracy. Tracy has withdrawn her name. So, I will hand that to the clerk. And with that, we will hand it over to Andrew Vickers, our city administrator.
Yeah, just one more clarification. Clerk Gresky and I determined that the first question is probably the fodder for the opening remarks for each of the candidates, so if the council would grade the opening remarks with that scoring sheet under question one, that is, again, a limit to three minutes, and then I'll start the timer and begin the questioning with question number two. And for the candidate's benefit, I will be keeping strict timeline on the 10-minute where there's, just for your benefit, there's a, seven questions, actually six, now that number one is your opening remarks, so just to have that internal clock in your head. Six questions you'll have to get through in 10 minutes, so, kind of keep an eye on that. I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the bullwhip guy, so, but I will have a timer and it will go off at 10 minutes, so hopefully you get through your questions.
Go ahead, Mike. We can do the paper ballots, but they will be read aloud much like a council president. We initial those, please. Any other questions? Okay. Attorney Carls, anything from you before we begin? Okay. We will then call what is our first candidate, who is listed second on the agenda, Mr. Gregory Lorick, 8565 South Whitney Drive. Are we putting them at the table, Andrew? I think it...
It was whatever's comfortable for the candidate.
Okay. Your choice, Mr. Lorick. Okay.
Make sure you got your mic.
May begin.
Kick it over to me. Thanks for your interest, Mr. Lorick. Let's start off with your opening remarks, pretty meditation, and be sure to introduce yourself, not that you wouldn't, but introduce yourself and include your back, your personal and professional background in your remarks.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name's Greg Lorick. As far as my background, I grew up in Milwaukee, on the south side of Milwaukee. Right after high school, I enlisted into the Coast Guard. I served about five years out of state. As soon as I returned back, I started schooling. I got a associate's degree in fire science, which led me to a job on an ambulance company and as a volunteer firefighter for Meskigo at the time. While I did that, I worked for Paratec Ambulance, private ambulance company, did that. I remained in the reserves for the Coast Guard that entire time, and then a couple recalls came up at the start of the war in Iraq. I got recalled, and then a second time I got recalled to actually recruit out of Chicago. I did that for four years. While I was active duty that second time, I got my bachelor's degree in business with emphasis in finance. Right after that, I immediately enrolled in grad school at UWM. I got my MBA, and I got a different job working as a weights and measure inspector for the state of Wisconsin. My territory included the city of Oak Creek, Hales Coroner's Franklin, and for that job, we basically enforced any weights and measures law and some type of consumer and fair, consumer affairs laws for the state of Wisconsin. In my most recent job, I actually switched careers, and I'm now a forensic investigator for the medical examiner in Milwaukee County, so I work downtown and I do death scene investigations. I'm currently married to my wife, Janelle. We got married about 10 years ago and immediately moved to Oak Creek. We moved to the area right near Cedar Hills, which is in the second district, and then about four years ago, we relocated, staying within the same school district for our kids, right by the water tank, kind of off 27th and Pute's there. We have three kids. Our daughter, Hallie, is a freshman in high school. My son, Cashden, is a kindergartner at Forest Ridge, and then my daughter, Audrina, is in third grade at Forest Ridge. A little bit about why I, why I was interested, I was actually looking for more ways to get involved. I'm currently the treasurer of the PTO at my children's school, and when the opportunity presented itself, I just thought it a natural fit. I was excited with what's happening in Oak Creek right now, with the growth that's going on. I wanted to be a part of that, and I was actually looking at getting my name on the ballot for the next election, but when the opening happened, I kind of jumped at the opportunity and put my paperwork in, my application and stuff.
Okay.
30 seconds to spare. All right, Mr. Lorick, please describe your community involvement, including items like special projects, any particular achievements, or any leadership roles that you've held in the community or other communities.
Well, to start with, I was, like I said, a firefighter on the volunteer fire department in Meskigo, Wisconsin. I only did that for about one year while I lived out there. Most recently, I was, I'm the current treasurer of the PTO at Forest Ridge Elementary. Prior to that, I served as treasurer for the Wisconsin Weights and Measures Association, which was a professional organization that was kind of associated with my job with the state. So, I resigned that position when I, when I switched careers and became a forensic investigator.
How would you, this is question number three. How would you handle an issue that is good for the entire city but may be bad for your district? An example, an upscale restaurant wants to open in a location that needs a form of council approval, but some residents and neighbors are opposed to this development.
I think it'd be important to reach out to the people within the district and at least initially try to explain why it's good for the city as a whole. I would definitely want the people within the district to be on board with something that I was supporting, so I think communication would be key, whether it's emails, phone calls, just getting out, walking around, talking to people, trying to explain why it would be a good thing and hopefully get their support. If not, I feel I would ultimately support the district, because I feel as an alderman representing a specific district, I would have to represent those people, and if I was unsuccessful in kind of swaying them to realize that it's good for the city as a whole, I would ultimately kind of support the people within the district.
What skills and experience can you bring to the council if appointed?
So, I think a good skill that I've, I gained while actually a recruiter for the Coast Guard was building partnerships between private and, in my case, the federal government as a coast guardsman. The local recruiting office was tasked at doing all their own marketing, advertising, and getting the best recruits that they possibly could. One of the years while I was down there, the Coast Guard kind of dubbed the Year of the Woman, and they were really pushing to increase their number of female applicants into the Coast Guard, and they were looking at ideas from local recruiting offices to kind of, to boost those numbers. So, I was able to reach out with the marketing director from the Chicago Sky, which is the WNBA team in Chicago, and we were able to create a, what was called a Coast Guard Night, where they would, from like the t-shirt cannon, they would shoot out Coast Guard t-shirts. They would put Coast Guard advertisements on the Jumbotron during the game, and it was kind of a partnership to, to draw applicants from that fan base, which we felt was kind of the target audience of what the Coast Guard was looking for at the time. Another thing would be, more recently, when I was a weights and measure inspector, I was tasked with investigating any consumer complaint within the county that I was assigned, which were actually quite a few, and we did investigate every single one, even if it seemed kind of frivolous complaint. We would investigate it, and then I was the person that would contact that person back, explain exactly what I did, explain the law, if there was a certain law that pertained to their complaint, give them the results, and if they didn't agree with it, I kind of had to try to explain, well, this is exactly what happened, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do, or this was the letter, or this was the, the kind of, the steps we took after we found something that was in fact wrong, and then we would send actually a thank you letter to that person, saying, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention. It has been addressed." So, during that time, I was able to really reach out to kind of people in the community and work both face-to-face and over the phone.
Question number five. Mr. Lorick, why do you want to be the second district alderperson for the city of Oak Creek?
I'm like, I'd kind of touched base in my opening remarks. I was very excited when the opportunity presented itself. My family loves Oak Creek. Like I said, when we moved, we stayed within the school district. We didn't want to leave the city. It's very exciting, especially in the second district with everything that's happening. You have Drexel Town Square. You have an Ikea opening up. There's, there's just a lot going on, which is kind of turning the city into a very much of a destination, and I did want to be a part of that. It's exciting knowing that the city's looking towards kind of, being a destination city, looking at kind of a tourism bureau and trying to get people to the city to take advantage of all this growth that's happening, but I also wanted to be a part in trying to kind of find a happy median and a balance between that extreme growth in the business sector with also protecting kind of the residential areas that people have come to love, the neighborhoods that people have come to love, and make sure that they understand that, that the growth is great for the city, and there's still going to be those areas that, that they're going to feel like they're in a neighborhood and not so much surrounded by businesses.
All right, question number six. What would you consider to be the three biggest issues facing the city of Oak Creek?
The first thing I would say would be the, kind of the, the happy median between the large business growth and maintaining a very strong residential neighborhood-friendly city. When I talk to people, that's kind of a lot of the concern that I'm already hearing is they're concerned with all these businesses going up, that they're kind of going, they're going to lose that sense of community and that sense of neighborhood. So, I like to, I like to get out and talk to people, whether it's just people in the neighborhood or people at local businesses when we go out to eat, and kind of get their take on the situation, explain my take on it, and just kind of have that back and forth with them. So, that would be number one. Number two, I would think, with continued growth, obviously it costs money for continued growth, so I would think that, kind of maintaining financial responsibility moving forward, making sure there's money to pay for everything that's coming, whether it's roadways or assistance to different businesses to get them to come to Oak Creek. I think that would be something that's kind of a challenge. And then the last thing is just change. I mean, everybody always says change is hard for everybody, so as the city, I feel changes quite a bit. When I was in high school, I guess I looked at Oak Creek more of not necessarily a farm town, but it was a lot more rural than, I grew up on the south side of Milwaukee, so it was a lot different. But now, living here, I see how much it's changed and how big it is, and I can, I can see that there's people that not necessarily would like that change, so I think a challenge would be actually getting out and kind of explaining why it's good for the city and trying to put their minds at ease with all the change that's happening.
All right, last question, just under two minutes. What would you like to accomplish by the end of your appointment?
I think I would, at some, I guess at some level, would like to make the people within the sector, second district, proud of me, said, I mean, say that I did a good job in representing them and made good decisions for the city as a whole. I mean, that's what I would consider myself successful, if that, if that kind of thing happened.
Nicely done. I don't think we want to open it up for questions and answers at this point, just so we're consistent with each candidate.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay.
He gets closing remarks.
Just that awkward pause there, I didn't want to...
Oh, no. No, I actually was just writing a note.
Okay.
So, really, it's just closing remarks.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity. I did kind of touch base on everything I wanted to touch base on. Like I said, I did consider pursuing my name on the ballot before the opening happened, and then when the opening happened, it just was kind of a natural thing for me to put in for, and although I do really hope that this works out for me, if it doesn't, I want everybody to know that I do plan on, on pursuing it in the future through, through the next election. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, regardless of how it comes out, I want to thank you for offering your time, experience, and talents to the citizens of Oak Creek.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate people like you stepping up.
Thank you.
Oh, who do we have next? Our next candidate is Ms. Jenny Von Helms. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll begin with three minutes of opening remarks as soon as City Administrator Vickers gives you the signal.
And Ms. Von Helms.
Hi.
Three minutes, strictly timed. I mean it.
Okay.
In your opening remarks, please be sure to, of course, introduce yourself and also include your personal and professional background.
Okay.
And we'll start when you do.
Hi, I'm Jenny Von Helms. I want to thank you for the opportunity today. I grew up on the south side of Chicago and the nearby suburbs, and my family moved around a lot. By the time my husband and I relocated to Wisconsin in 2000, I was 28, and the longest I had spent at a single address was three years. So, we've lived in Oak Creek now for 17 years, and within two miles of our house, we have our church, our bank, our dining, shopping, schools, vets, Little League, everything that we need. And Eric and I have been able to give our children something that we didn't have growing up, which is a sense of community. We see people we know and running errands, and we've created important traditions with our neighbors. I share this because I think it's important to know that I don't take Oak Creek for granted. Much like you, I recognize that we have something very special here in our city. The location, community, and opportunities for growth are second to none, and to me, the role of city government is to preserve and protect what makes Oak Creek special while balancing development and changes that make our community dynamic and stronger, all under the umbrella of fiscal responsibility. I'm interested in the aldermanic position because the future of Oak Creek is important to me. I want our city to continue to be a desirable place to live and work and to do business for generations to come. We have the potential and the land to be a municipal leader in our region, a destination, and District Two certainly plays a big role in that. I believe I'm the right person for the job because I bring a fresh perspective. I've spent my career in nonprofit and higher education, which I think is different than most of the council members. I currently work for the Salvation Army in Milwaukee, and I'm responsible for securing $1.5 million in government grants for our homeless programs in Milwaukee, and I take the responsibility of stewarding these tax dollars very seriously. I serve as a voting member on the Milwaukee Continuum of Care, which is a HUD-required collaboration of private and public sectors and homelessness in communities, and where I put the needs of the entire community ahead of the needs of my agency's bottom line, and I often connect with county and city government on advocacy issues related to our mission. Through my work and volunteer experience, I've become very passionate about local government. I'm co-founder of Yes for Oak Creek Schools, an advocacy group formed in 2014 to support the district's referendum, and we had success passing that as well as adding two new seats to the school board. Most recently, our focus has been on educating voters about school board elections and encouraging people to vote. What I've found is that people want to be involved, but they don't understand how the process of local government works, and I think that's unfortunate because city councils and school boards have the most direct and immediate impact on our daily lives, and I think local municipalities can be the most collaborative and effective level of government since they're nonpartisan in most places like we have here. So, in closing, much like you, I'm invested in seeing Oak Creek succeed, and I think I have the leadership and skills to be an effective alderman. Thanks.
Five seconds to spare, very nice. Make sure this doesn't go off if I can. Naturally, there'll be some redundancy in your answers to the questions that we have, so don't worry about that at all, okay?
Okay.
Question number two is, Ms. Von Helms, please describe your community involvement, including things like special projects, any particular achievements, or any leadership roles you've played.
Okay. Last year, the last two years, I helped the Oak Creek, or the Edgewood PTO become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and helped with the bylaws to make sure that that was going to continue as a strong organization after I was gone. My daughter's in middle school now, so PTO days are behind me, and my son is in high school, and then I've mentioned what I've done with Yes for Oak Creek Schools, and we've accomplished the referendum, the additional seats on the school board. We've had a role in educating voters about the school board elections and things like that.
Question three. How would you handle an issue that is good for the entire city but may be bad for your district? As an example, perhaps an upscale restaurant wants to open in a location that needs some form of council approval, but resident, some residents and neighbor, neighbors are opposed to this development.
Okay. I can see that happens a lot in public office. I think when you're looking at the whole, what's best for Oak Creek, not just in the next five years, but down the road, and you have to balance that with what the constituents are looking for, and sometimes people need to be heard on things, and sometimes they just want their way, and it's hard to distinguish the difference a lot. I think if I were in support of something like that and didn't have the favor of the district, then I would try to find out where the concerns are and address those from that level.
Question four. What skills and experience can you bring to the council if appointed?
I'm an excellent writer and editor. I'm not sure if that comes into play, but that means I also do a lot of research analysis, and I read a lot of policy at work, so I've got that experience. I've worked with budgeting on a smaller level and a larger level, and reading financial statements, which is a skill in itself. I think I'm good at, I've, I'm familiar with things that would touch the city council, such as fair housing laws, even I've got knowledge of bedbugs from working in a homeless shelter, not firsthand knowledge, but I saw that that was in the press, something that has come up, and I think that I bring a lot of empathy and eagerness to learn.
Question five. Why do you want to be the second person, second district alderperson for the city of Oak Creek?
I think, as I've stated, that I really love this community, and we've, my husband and I specifically have chosen to raise our children here, and I think it means a lot to be able to be part of the decision-making, to make this a great community from here on out. I've also done a couple of leadership trainings this year since January, and I've just come to realize that I do have some, that I do have really good leadership skills, and I have been looking for something to fit the next project in my life. So, I think it's just, it was really kind of serendipitous timing with this because I was looking for a way to serve beyond what I do for the Salvation Army.
Question six, two remaining, so you're, you're fine on time.
Okay, thanks.
What are the three biggest, in your opinion, what are the three biggest issues facing the city of Oak Creek?
Traffic, number one. I know there's a lot of concern about, with the Drexel interchange. I've noticed a lot of, an increase in traffic on 13th Street near where my home is located, and I think that those concerns are shared across the board. I also think the development, especially in District Two along 27th Street, you know, that area's really needed a lot of work in the last decade or so, or probably more than that, and I think people are really worried about what's going to happen. Is it going to be more development that's going to be at a low vacancy rate, or is it going to be things that are going to really bring people here? So, there's, those are two issues, so traffic and then the development, and I think just, it's always been, I've attended a lot of school board meetings, and there always seems to be this push and pull between people who grew up in Oak Creek and want it and might not be wanting to see change happen as rapidly as it has. So, I think balancing, you know, where the momentum is with Oak Creek, with still trying to keep it, have that small town, small community feel, to feel like we're just not going after big dollars or big names, so trying to find that balance, I think, would be something that's on the mind of a lot of residents.
All right, last question. You have about five minutes remaining. What would you like, what would you like to accomplish by the end of your appointment?
Ah, okay. Well, coming up in the next, let's see, what is that? Yeah, next 12 months would be breaking ground in Ikea, and I think that is going to, I'm sure that you're going to be getting, hearing a lot from residents about that. There's concerns that it's close to the schools, and as somebody who, as I mentioned, worked hard on the referendum to get Forest Ridge built, I was, we were told that that land was going to remain residential, or it was at the time, and then to have it switch over was, I know these things happen, but that was kind of a disappointment, although I see Ikea becoming, it's, it's going to be wonderful for Oak Creek. I think it's going to be, it's a really good accomplishment to have them coming here. So, I think trying to address those issues of what the traffic is going to be like... So I think trying to address those issues of what the traffic is going to be like, especially during construction, and where the development of that area is going to happen. Is there going to be access from 27th Street through? And what's going to happen over there? I think that's going to be something that's coming up in the next year. So the accomplishment would be to handle those things effectively and to keep the community in the know about what's happening there. One thing I'd like to accomplish, too, is to get the voting out of the middle schools. There's security concerns about that, and a lot of, even some schools in Illinois will close the schools on Election Day. And I think we have other options in Oak Creek, so that's something that I personally want to work to do. But most of all, if I have more time, I'll say, I would like to see people getting more involved with local government and understanding how these, how the school district and how common council works with their tax dollars. I think people often see that they don't have a voice, and that's too bad because it's, it's kind of a cynical way of looking at things, but really, the government belongs to the people, and I would like to encourage more people to get involved in different ways.
Very good.
Okay.
You do have some, you do have some closing remarks if you'd like to make them, so I think everybody's jotting down some notes, and then the mayor will call upon you for those remarks.
Second remark now, or?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I think, as I mentioned, my background is different from, I think, most people on the board who have worked in small business or the corporate sector, so I think that would bring a different perspective. And I've really worked over the years to create a sense of empathy with people. As compliance officer at a nonprofit, I hear a lot of complaints from staff about making them jump through hoops for things, and I really empathize with that. I mean, they're, they're social workers. They should be helping people and talking to people and not having to do paperwork for me and to do all these things that we have to do, but there's a balance, the circle of how our funding works and what we have to, our responsibility to the funder. So that's one example of how I can empathize when people have a problem with what's going on, and if I try to explain the big picture and try to find creative solutions to help them make their job easier. So I think that's something that would really be in my favor for working with constituents.
Ms. Von Helms, on behalf of the entire council, we'd like to thank you for offering your time, your experience, and your knowledge, and stepping up to serve the citizens of Oak Creek regardless of how the outcome comes out tonight. Again, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have candidate number three, Mr. Michael Schmidt from 8170 South Wildwood Drive. I don't think Michael's in the room. Going to get him, Catherine? Thank you.
Just for the record, the timer is my alarm clock, so I will actually hate it, hearing it more than any of the candidates, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're keeping.
I caught it after one, like usual in the morning, so.
Welcome, Mr. Schmidt.
Hi.
Again, Mr. Vickers is gonna administer the questions, but you do get three minutes of open remarks when the administrator tells you to go.
Timer here? Mr. Schmidt, three minutes for opening remarks, starting when you begin, and please include, obviously, introduction to yourself as well as some personal and professional background.
Great. And go. Hi, my name is Mike Schmidt. I live over on the other side of the nice new parkland there, across the tracks. Let's see, background, came here in 94, built the house that we live in now. Well, I didn't build it, but anyway. So I am a pharmacist. I work for a company called Community Care. We help keep frail elders and disabled people living at home in the community. So I graduated from Wisconsin, 1988, with my degree in pharmacy. Since then, I've been involved mostly with Boy Scouts. Part of the reason that I'm running for this is I'm a merit badge counselor for all of the citizenship merit badges, nation, world, community. One of the questions that I always ask the boys, or one of the requirements for the boys, is to give an idea of how you can be involved in government. And to a boy, not one of them yet has ever said, "Well, I can actually be those people that are on the council or running for office." And the opportunity here came up, and I thought, "Well, if not you, who? And if not now, when?" And I thought, "Well, okay, I'll send in my stuff and see what happens." Anything else you want to know?
Restart the timer now. We'll have 10 minutes for six additional questions. Beginning with, and again, as I've mentioned to the other candidates, there will be some redundancy from your opening remarks to the, you know, your responses to the questions. No big deal, okay?
Okay. Good to know.
Please describe your community involvement, including things like special projects, particular achievements, and any leadership roles you've played.
Okay. Involvement in the community, again, it was mostly through scouts. As a Cub Master, Scout Master, Den Leader, Merit Badge Counselor, I was also District... Anyway, I used to go around to the different Cub Packs in the area and help them out with the things they needed from the council, essentially, through the district. But I also was involved with the band program a little bit. I helped out on weekends down with the band dads, and was drafted into service for the first state competition my daughter was in because the buses showed up late and all of the helpers were on the buses, and they needed extra people. And other than that, yeah, that's pretty much the extent of it.
Thank you. Question three, how would you handle an issue that is good for the entire city but may be bad for your district? As an example, perhaps an upscale restaurant wants to open in a location that needs some form of council approval, but some residents and neighbors are opposed to the development?
Well, I would imagine it has to do with how many people are getting involved in the process. If, for example, all I'm hearing is people don't want this restaurant here in my district, it would have to be a judgment opinion, obviously, but at the same time, you can't ignore the people that live in your district. I can't say how I would do that based on, you know, just a hypothetical question, but it would have to be something that, you can't not listen to the constituents, but you have to understand that some things may be better for the city overall.
Thank you. Question four, what skills and experience can you bring to the council if you're appointed?
Skills and experience I can bring to the council? Well, I'm a quick study. I can usually make, I do my learning through mostly theme and variations. Once I learn how to do something, I can apply it to the other things that I have to do at the same time. I have a good base of history of the area and the community, and would be able to see what I think the direction of the city might be based on the past. Yeah, that's about it.
Question five, why do you want to be the second district Alderperson for the city of Oak Creek?
Because I live in the second district. And I put my name in, basically, because I, given the history of the elections in the area, especially this last one, they're very lightly, the turnout was very light, it was only a little less than 15%. I think that in order to complain about something, you have to at least try to get involved, and I don't really like to complain, but at the same time, you know, if it's going to be something that's going on and I have something to say about it, well, I can try and get involved. Seems to be no reason why not at this point in my life. Both of my kids are in college right now, so I don't have to worry about carting them around or that kind of a thing, so I have the time. I think I could do a good job at it.
Question six, what do you consider to be the three biggest issues facing the city of Oak Creek?
Well, one has got to be growth and managing it. You know, with this whole town square project, things seem to be really taking off. I've noticed anecdotally that there's a lot more traffic these days. It's hard to get out of my subdivision in the mornings because of the extra traffic, because of the new development. So that's one thing. Then we also need to probably determine where we're going to go as far as residents, developments, those sorts of things. There's still lots and lots of open land in Oak Creek, and I kind of wonder what's going to happen with it. And there's also the 27th Street corridor. We seem to be all focused on this particular area. Meanwhile, 27th Street's been getting rebuilt, and seems like that's ripe for starting off pretty soon, too. That's free, I think.
Last question, you're fine on time. What would you like to accomplish by the end of your appointment?
Well, I'd like to get a good feel for how the council works and learn more about what's going on than I think I might know, because I'm pretty sure I don't know everything that there is to know around here. You know, I know we have a new city administrator and the new mayor, and it's kind of interesting to be, you know, starting off with fresh faces and everything.
That concludes the questions. You're going to have a chance for some closing remarks if everybody's done taking notes.
We look, guys. Okay. Mr. Schmidt, whenever you'd like to open.
Need to make some closing remarks? Closing remarks? Well, thanks for your time. Thanks for coming out on a night that you didn't have something better to do. I'm sure you did. But thanks for what you do for the city, and that's all I got to say. I just hope I'm not the guy that doesn't have no, any votes. We were sitting there, talking about it and thinking, you know, there's four guys voting and five of us that are going. Wouldn't it be weird if it was tied, every four people got one vote, one person got none, and then the mayor had to, does that tiebreaker work with you, with that?
That's how it would work. So you're learning already.
But anyway, that's all I've got to say. Who's next?
Well, very quickly, on behalf of the entire council, the citizens of Oak Creek, I want to thank you for offering your time, your talent, your knowledge to share and make the city a better place to be regardless of how it comes out tonight. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thanks.
Next will be Mr. Eddie Paez. Welcome, Mr. Paez. You will be granted a three-minute opening remark as soon as Administrator Vickers gives you the signal.
Okay.
It will be followed by the same questions every candidate got.
Sounds good.
And then two minutes of closing remarks. Just give us a second.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
In your opening remarks, which, as the mayor said, will be three minutes, just, we'll begin when you begin, the time, please just be sure to, of course, introduce yourself and also include your personal and professional background in your opening remarks.
Oh, okay. All right, well, my name is G. Period Eddie Paez, G. S. R. Gilbert. No one's ever called me that, so. Basically, right now, I'm a recruiter manager for staffing company. And basically, some of the key reasons why I'd like to run is I've always had an interest in municipal government, such as Alderperson. I ran an open seat in the city of Milwaukee in 2000. There are many issues that I felt not being addressed in my district. With my acquired experience and vision on how to address many of these concerns that were affecting our safety, our home, and our family's future in that area, I decided to run. I took second place. Sounds better than saying that I lost that race. Also, being an asset to the Oak Creek Common Council, I've acquired more than 10 years experience in roles. I worked with the state, county, city government on a daily basis. Specifically, the city of Milwaukee, I worked closely with Department of City Development in regard to economic issues, Neighborhood Services in regard to housing issues. I worked closely with many of the police districts throughout the city of Milwaukee, as well as many other surrounding cities' community-related issues. I was appointed to several committees by the mayor's office as a representative and the only non-elected person on these committees where I gained a lot of insight and experience that I feel I can offer the city of Oak Creek.
Second to reset the timer, then we'll start the questions.
Oh, okay.
Fine on the time there. As I've mentioned to other candidates, there's going to be some redundancy in your responses to the questions, you know, redundancy to your opening remarks. Don't worry about that at all, okay? The question, first question for you, and the time will start when you do. Please describe your community involvement, including items like special projects, any particular achievements you want to convey, and any leadership roles you've assumed.
Well, basically, one key thing is that I had an opportunity to work a lot with the, in the past, with community-related issues, Neighborhood Black Watches, for example. Here, I have not, because we haven't had a lot of issues or concerns, but basically, I've had the opportunity in the past to work with it. Police departments, as I mentioned, I've had some interactions and some dealings with city departments on both personal level and professional, I mean, professional here in the city. Nothing that, you know, with council, for example, but city departments as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Question number three, how would you handle an issue that is good for the entire city but may be bad for your district? As an example, perhaps an upscale restaurant wants to open, open in a new location that needs some form of council approval, but some residents and neighbors are opposed to this type of development?
Well, okay. First, I'd basically get the pros and the cons from constituents. I'd find out what's the reasoning behind not wanting it, the restaurant, you know, work with the council, and find out what's the benefit, how it can benefit. I would go back to the constituent and say, "This would benefit us as a whole." And sometimes, you basically have to give in some situations or situations because later in time, you might need the support of the full council. So communication with your constituents is huge. You're not going to always be able to support or gain what they would like, but at least you explain to them. I think the communication part of it is huge. I think the communication part of it is huge, explaining to them why you made your decision, um, even if you don't support it, that it was something that you didn't support, but overall, it's, it's constituents, uh, alderperson, that makes that all, the final decision, not just one alderperson.
Excellent. Uh, question four. What skills and experience can you bring to the council if appointed?
Um, well, as I mentioned, um, I've worked with, um, neighborhood services in regard to, like, building coding, building codes. I've worked with, um, community-related issues with police, um, I worked with, um, department, economic and development, with Department of City Development in, in a larger structure. Um, I, I know here right now, Oak Creek's huge right now in economics, and I see it every day, you know, it's a huge plus. Um, that's something I could add and, and feel that'll be a strong asset to the council.
Right, question number five. Why do you want to be the second district alderperson for the city of Oak Creek?
Why? Well, it's something similar to what I have in my questions. I, I've always liked local government. Um, I feel it directly directs and impacts your family, your home, um, your community. I like local politics. I, I prefer it to any further, the local politics. Um, I just think that the impact is more visible, more, more short-term rather than long-term. I know sometimes you guys work on projects for long-term, but a lot of the results are short-term, and I like to be part of that team. Um, I think that the common council's a team, uh, even though you individually represent your district, but it takes a team to actually complete projects and get projects completed.
Question six, doing fine on time. What are the three biggest, what would you consider to be the three biggest issues facing the city of Oak Creek?
Hmm, um, future economic issues, I think that's a big one. I mean, I know we're dealing with a lot of current issues. Um, safety, uh, we, we're good here in Oak Creek. I know we have some incidents in pockets of Oak Creek, but for the most part, it's always a concern. So, safety, working, you know, with the police and addressing that, and then budget, I think the budget, you know, we have to basically be accountable to the budget.
All right, last question. What would you like to consider by the end of your appointment? Excuse me, what would you like to accomplish by the end of your appointment?
Okay.
Probably consider a bunch of things.
Um, well, I, you know, to say that I actually accomplished something would be huge, um, to feel that over, for the most part, you can make the majority of the constituents happy. Um, you're not gonna make them all happy. I know, you know, there's always some individuals that are not gonna always be happy, but, you know, hopefully, and a huge part, from my perspective, is the communication part. Um, I feel that even if they don't agree, if you communicate with them and keep them in, informed and of what situations are occurring, what's happening, being responsive, being there, um, is huge. So, I would like to say, if elected, that basically I left with, with, you know, results, economic, community involvement, and also a safe, a safer community. I mean, that's basically why I bought my home in Oak Creek.
Okay, there's gonna be a couple minutes for closing remarks as soon as the mayor gives you the go-ahead. Everybody done taking notes and all that?
Ready? Whenever you're comfortable, you may start your two minutes.
Okay. Thirteen years ago, my wife and I decided to purchase our home in Oak Creek and moved our family here to raise our kids. We decided this because it was safe, schools were good, and we really enjoyed the community as a whole. Those who know my story know, we had, we've had a few obstacles. We dealt with the hundred-year Oak Creek flood, and my home was the one that got the most damage in the block. Then the fire destroyed our home later, but no one was hurt, so basically, that's always a good thing. At that point, we could've given up, built anywhere we would like, but we chose to stay in the same location, build new. It was a hard decision, but made very easy when we looked at all the pros and the cons of Oak Creek. Glad to say there was not many cons. I've had the opportunity to have all my children grow and graduate from Oak Creek High School. When I first heard of Dan's appointment, I thought, "Good for him, it may be good for me," with the open seat. I thought this opportunity for me to be the next alderperson and continue to make a difference. Now, I'd like to give back to the community and part of the solutions, growth, and the future of Oak Creek. I do understand that it would be, as a representative of the second district, and the importance of being responsive to constituents' concerns. My goal is to be accessible, active as a representative of second district, and work as a team player with the full council from day one, with my experience.
Good. Uh, Paez, on behalf of the entire council, citizens of Oak Creek, I'd like to thank you for offering up your time, your experience, your knowledge, uh, and your talents to the city of Oak Creek. Regardless of how the outcome comes out, I'd like, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, council.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda, Ms. Margaret Wolford, uh, Seventy-nine, Sixty-nine, South Main. Oh, you wanna take a short break? Catherine? We're gonna take a short break. Five-minute break, recess. Uh, thank you for your patience. Please approach the podium. Uh, again, as all candidates, you'll get a three-minute opening remark. Administrator Vickers will ask you the questions, and then you'll have two minutes of closing remarks. So, uh, as soon as the administrator's ready with the timer, uh, you can start your three
In your opening remarks, Ms. Wolford, please, um, limit yourself to three minutes. Obviously, the timer'll start when you start, but also, please, be sure to, of course, introduce yourself and include your personal and professional background in your remarks.
Okay. Hi, um, I am Margaret Wolford. I live at Seventy-nine, Sixty-nine, South Main Street. My personal experience, well, most of you know me, um, as Maggie, I'm, was twenty years at the Department of Community Development, right here at the city. Um, and I don't know what more to say other than that.
Restart the timer for the, the questions. There'll be six additional questions.
Okay.
You'll have ten minutes. I'll keep track of time for you. Um, give me one second. So, question, uh, number one, outside of the opening remarks, please describe your community involvement and include items like special projects, any particular achievements you wish to convey, uh, or any leadership roles you've assumed.
Hmm. Well, um, I have not applied for a job for twenty-five years, so most of my experience that I've had has been through the city, uh, with my professional career at the city. A long time ago, I was a Girl Scout leader. I can't think of too many other things that I have done other than be a mother and, uh,
All right, number, question number three. How would you handle an issue that is good for the entire city, but may be bad for your district? An example, maybe an upscale restaurant wishes to open a location, in a location that needs some sort of council approval, uh, what, but, but some of the residents and neighbors are opposed to that type of development?
Okay, will this development be going in District Two or outside of District Two?
I think theoretically, it would be in District Two, given the nature of the question.
Okay. Um, I would probably have, um, meet the applicant and, uh, probably request a informational meeting to be held with the, um, residents of the district, and invite the city staff and discuss the issues of the restaurant and what some of the problems might be, be it parking or hours of operation.
Next question. What skills and experience can you bring to the council if appointed?
Skills, um, well, my skills and my knowledge of twenty years of experience in the Department of Community Development, I'm very familiar with, um, zoning codes and comprehensive plans, uh, TIF districts. I'm pretty knowledgeable in all those, and I would be able to, um, understand the issues and make a, a, a good decision, um, voting on it.
The next question. Uh, why do you want to be the second district alderperson for the city of Oak Creek?
Well, uh, since moving into the district, um, six months ago, I have noticed that there are some concerns, uh, especially with traffic, parking issues. I know with, um, IKEA coming into town, there's going to be far more traffic, especially with the, uh, Juxcel Town Square and the, the new school, uh, so there are some issues that are definitely, um, concerning.
The next question. What are the three biggest issues, in your opinion, that are facing the city of Oak Creek?
The city of Oak Creek? Uh, well, I think, uh, three of the biggest issues facing the city of Oak Creek are, um, our taxes, for one thing, um, traffic, controlling the traffic, parking is an issue, the development of the new, um, park along the lake.
Lastly, you're fine on time. Uh, what would you like to accomplish by the end of your appointment?
Well, to be honest with you, this would be just a year appointment. I probably would not run for office next April. I would, um, be a voice for the constituents of this district, to meet with the, uh, the citizens and the businesses, um, work on, um, business retention for the district. I know this is a district that has a lot of, uh, industry in it, as well as an exploding
When we're done, uh, writing notes down, the mayor will give you an opportunity for two minutes of closing remarks.
Whenever you are ready, you may start your two minutes closing remarks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. It's a bit strange to be standing on this side of the podium. Whoever you choose, I'm sure will be, um, a good candidate to fill your position, and again, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire council, uh, the city, the citizens of the city, we'd like to thank you for your time, your experience, and your knowledge, uh, that you have offered up to serve the city.
Well, thank you.
Uh, regardless of how it out, the outcome come, uh, the outcome is, uh, we'd like to thank you for the effort of stepping up.
Thank you. It would be an honor and a privilege to fill your seat.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, yep, go ahead, Catherine. We will be checking for our last candidate, uh, Fayad Al Ghazi. Uh, we reached out to him in, uh, a few ways of communication, and we have not heard back from the candidate, so we're unsure if he is here at the time, so, uh, we're gonna give Appears Mr. Al Ghazi is not present, um, so at this time, we will take a short recess, um, and we will return in about five to ten minutes or so, and then we will call the candidates to the room. At this time, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting temporarily. Five-minute recess. Thank you for your assistance. So, at this time, I will have, uh, City Attorney Carls just kinda go over the procedure of the voting ballots and how it's gonna work. Uh, I just wanna remind the aldermen, we need them initial. It is part of the procedure, so please remember to initial your ballots, and I will let, uh, Melissa Carls now explain the procedure.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the council has, in the past, used the nomination process, where the mayor can open the floor for nominations, and once any and all nominations are made, then a motion can be entertained to close the nominations. There would be a second on the motion, and then a vote on the motion to close the nominations. The nominations would then be closed, and, uh, there could be a vote by, a vote by voice or a vote by paper ballot, and in the past, it has been by paper ballot. Um, this is not a secret ballot. The ballots would be available to the public if requested, which is the reason for designating the initials on that paper ballot. So, if those are the rules adopted by the council, there would need to be three votes for this position of alderperson, uh, for a majority.
Any questions from council? Okay. At this time, uh, would everyone please cast their first vote? Uh, make sure they're initialed, and we will pass them to our city clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I think you're correct. Is there any discussion beforehand, any comments you'd like to make to the candidates? Uh, Alderman Tomlin.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I was, I was one of the, uh, aldermen, probably the only one that was a little skeptical about the process, only because of the fact that maybe we only had one qualified candidate, maybe we wouldn't feel that that person was the right person for the job. So, I asked the city attorney how that would play out, and, uh, obviously, that's not the case. I'm very impressed by the people that came forth and volunteered to take this position, so that, that's off the table for me. That never happened. We've, we've got some very impressive candidates, and there's, actually, I have several that could fill the seat. I, I only get one vote, so that's, that's where it's at. The only, the only disappointing responses, or the response I did not hear to the question of the three most important issues in Oak Creek was, nobody mentioned the lakefront. And that, that's huge on my list. It's in my district. Even though it's in my district, it's still a citywide issue, and that's, that's gonna be one of our big things coming up in Oak Creek, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Kerkowski?
I just wanna state that I was happy to see seven applicants. I was fearful we might get one or two, but I was just glad to see seven. Thank you.
Alderman Gill?
Thanks, mayor. Um, I too appreciate everyone stepping up and taking the opportunity. We, uh, we struggle at times to find folks who are willing to, to step up and volunteer and, and provide their services to the community, and as, as Alderman Tomlin said, it's, it's good to see folks with the backgrounds that, that you folks, uh, display and have, that, uh, be willing to step up and, and, uh, put yourselves out to, to hopefully, you know, attain this kinda job. Uh, you know, it's great to hear, you know, your love of your community, we, that you, you know, love living here, love being in Oak Creek, wanna make the community better, so you've raised your families here. Uh, that's very important. It's, it's good to hear that folks, you know, treasure that experience here, living in the sun. That's why we all serve, I think, uh, because we love our community, we love to serve as well. The outreach to constituents, obviously, that is, uh, you know, first and foremost, as a local representative, that's what comes, you know, that's your, kinda your marching orders, that's where you're gonna, you're gonna, you bring your personal beliefs and your personal experiences and your professional background, but the interaction with your local residents, that, uh, that matters the most, and then dealing with everyone in a collaborative manner, being at staff, we have a building full of wonderful staff. Uh, you've got five, we'll have, uh, five, uh- You've got five, we'll have five very experienced, very wide, very varied background folks you're going to work with here in the common council, so there's a lot of experience here, and as long as you don't think you need to, say, drive the train all by yourself, you can do wonderful things here as an alderperson here in Oak Creek. So, we like that. Whoever ends up with the role here, we're going to be very happy to work with you.
I just want to thank everybody for taking the time and submitting their names, going through and reading everything that we had to read, and we had plenty of time to do it. You can't help but just be impressed with just the gamut of experiences and knowledge that everybody brings to the table here. When I look at the candidates, I, like Alderman Tomlin, you know, and there's two or three that are right there, so I mean, but everybody's qualified, and so, thank you for being here tonight, and as Alderman Gale said, we, everyone's qualified enough that it would be a pleasure to work with whoever we nominate.
Any further discussion? Alderman Kerkowski.
Yeah, I think I just ended my comments a little bit too soon, not thinking it out thoroughly, but I think the toughest question that the candidates had tonight would be, how do you vote on something that is controversial in your district when perhaps the residents in your district don't like it? And I just want to say that I think we've all had that opportunity or that issue up here, and it's a tough, it's a tough decision at times, but you have to vote for what's best for the city, even though members and residents in your district don't particularly like the issue, so that's probably, as former Mayor Scafitti once said, it's where you kind of earn your money with those tough decisions, so thank everybody for applying. I did appreciate getting the stuff on Friday, where we had an opportunity to spend time over the weekend and to digest everything. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. At this time, we will cast our first ballots. We'll open the floor for nominations. Anybody want to nominate? Do we have an option of either nomination or by vote? Is that what you're saying, City Attorney?
We have, in the past, had nominations, and once all the nominations are on the floor, then we have a motion to close the nominations, a second, and then a vote to close the nominations, and then the paper ballot, if that's what you would like to do, if those are the rules that you would like to entertain. The alternative would be if you wanted to simply proceed with the paper ballot, have your votes that way. In the past, it's been the nomination, and then the paper ballot vote.
City Attorney, would it be the nomination process winnowing it down to what would be subject to the paper ballot, then? So, it's one cut, if you will? Okay.
Okay.
Alderman Tomlin would like to nominate Greg Lorick.
Second. Or any other nominations?
Alderman Guzekowski would like to nominate Jenny Von Helms.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, same one, we will close the nominations. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Yeah, one second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Nominations are now closed. Paper ballots are coming to the center, I believe.
Okay, I'll read in the record the paper ballots. Mr. Lorick. Mr. Lorick. Mr. Lorick. And Mr. Lorick. So, there are four votes for Mr. Greg Lorick.
So, at this point in time, we would be looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Greg Lorick to second district alderman.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Greg Lorick, second district alderman.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Lorick and all the candidates for coming out. Please, again, keep that civic duty in mind. There are plenty of boards, commissions to apply to within the city. Remain active. Please, I urge you, go out, celebrate Oak Creek, and discover Oak Creek. Thank you. A motion to adjourn.
Guzekowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Pardon.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and again, congratulations, and we will see you at planning tomorrow, 6 o'clock. Again, please, get out, celebrate Oak Creek, discover Oak Creek. Thank you.